Long weekend?
Going to be see you.
I'd like to bring to order the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee for Tuesday, May 23rd, at Abington Town Hall, a Carter Hearing Room. We would ask that everyone stand for a salute to the flagboard. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for those who lost their lives in Manchester, England last evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to start off this meeting, kind of a special meeting tonight. I want to congratulate both Wendy and Chris for their success in the election. And welcome, Chris, as a member of the school committee. But I would be remiss if I didn't also recognize Alan Killian for six years of service to the children of Abington. During those years, she served as the vice chairman of the committee, the chairman, as well as on numerous other committees. And we offer a big thank you.
So if I could just echo some of what Kathy said, I want to certainly congratulate Chris and Wendy and welcome Chris. And then also just take a moment, if Alan Killian or her friends and family are watching on cable at some point, just thank her very much. She worked very hard on behalf of children in Abington for many years in her various roles, and it's just greatly appreciated.
And we'd also like to take things a little bit out of order from the agenda that you have in front of you, because we have some special visitors from the Center School. So I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Center School students.
As you may or may not know, last year, the kindergarten adopted a new curriculum designed by some staff within the Boston Public Schools called Focus on K-2. Like with any new curriculum, the teachers were hesitant about change and what implementing the program would entail. But after piloting a unit during the 2015-2016 school year, we were all immediately hooked and so happy to see so much of what is important in kindergarten back in the kindergarten classroom. Every day, we have dramatic play back. We have blocks back. We have art studio back. And these are along with drawing centers, writing centers, wordwork centers, library and puzzles. These are all areas of kindergarten classrooms that we all may remember, but areas that have received a little less attention in the most recent years. I'm happy to report that they are back and with more depth and more purpose. So this year, we've been implementing Focus on K-2 all year. A third unit of study is construction. Naturally, many think blocks and Legos. And although they were a big part of that, it also included activities such as constructing a dance, story construction in kindergarten. But when it came to the capstone project of the construction unit, the project that was designed by the Boston staff was very geared towards the city of Boston. So I wanted to think of something that would be more meaningful for my class of Abington students, but follow the same stages of envisioning, researching, planning, executing and revising. Again, they're doing all of this in kindergarten. So as we proceeded, I was mulling over how I was going to modify this at the end. And I should have known that after teaching for 20 years that they took care of it themselves and the kids came up with a better idea than I probably could have thought of. And so our toy donation shop project was born. So Haley Callenberg and Madison Morley are the two young ladies who were sitting on a bus and came up with an idea. And they're going to share you the details along with a little slideshow that we have.
As long as it comes back up. Don't like computers that go to sleep. Okay.
And if people filming on their phones want to change their angles so they can see better, get a better shot, feel free to move over towards the screen. I mean, feel, you know, make yourself at home. Do you want to move the mic down to the table so it can be heard? Glad Felicia's doing this instead of me.
I think it's for cable. Madison and I had an idea on the bus about the toy shop. We decided to go to writing and drawing.
We thought it would be good to have, to give toys to kids who don't have any.
We brought it to thinking and feedback.
We wanted to see what everyone thought about the toy shop.
They liked it.
So we came up with ideas and rules for our letter for the shop.
Everyone helped. Armani made a sign for the shop.
Libby and Jake decorated the paper because they are good artists.
Emerson did writing because she has neat writing.
So then this was the letter that they designed themselves with their rules and their artwork. It says, "Dear families, please donate toys if you have extra. We will give them to families that need them. We are looking for dolls, trucks and cars, building toys and puzzles and books. You can send one to five toys. They need to be in a bag, be new or used, to be clean, to have all their pieces and not be broken. Thank you from room 11 at Center School."
So many people helped make signs. Other people went around the school to hang them up. Everyone had a turn to work at the shop.
We made tally marks to count and put the toys in the right box.
We collected so many toys.
So as you can see, children are more than we think they are. They can do more than we think they can do. All they need is a vote of confidence from the grownups, whom they will ultimately replace anyway. Their dreams today will become the realities of tomorrow. So now we have hundreds of toys, and we are now working with a local Girl Scout troop that needs their end-of-the-year project to be a giving trip. And so we are working with them to get the toys to needy families. But we donated so many brand-new toys that we can also reach out to South Shore Hospital's Pediatric Ward or Brockton Hospital's Pediatric Ward, as they only take new toys. So we're hoping to get that all coordinated and everything where it needs to be by the end of June.
That is awesome.
Great job.
Girls, you had a wonderful idea, and you did a wonderful reading job.
Thank you.
So just one, obviously a great job. And you also did a great job, ladies, explaining or showing people how rich and meaningful the kindergarten experience is. A million years ago, when I was in kindergarten, we did nothing like that. And so it's, those are important developmental years and the good work that Amy's doing and the Center School is doing with this curriculum. And the young ladies did a better job of explaining that to everyone than I think we could have. So thank you for that.
Yes, you are. Oh, okay. Yep, sorry.
All right, since this is our first school committee meeting since the election, we are required by our bylaws to reorganize the school committee. So our next thing will be our reorganization. Need a motion to authorize the secretary to act as temporary chairperson for the purpose of opening nominations and completing the election for the position of school committee chairperson.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, so we will turn things over to Jeanette.
And I would like to stop by asking for nominations for our chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Bailey.
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominations for chair of the Abington School Committee? Hearing, hearing none. I need a motion to close nominations for chairperson.
I'll make that nomination. I mean, that. Motion, thank you.
And second?
I'll second it.
So the motion to elect Kathy Bailey as chairperson has been made by Mikroski, seconded by Wendy Happel. And we need a vote, correct?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, then I will assume the chairmanship. We are, of course, I don't have that little list there. I look for a nomination for vice chairman.
I'll nominate, can I nominate? I'll nominate Mikroski.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All right. Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none. I need a motion to close nominations for vice chairman.
I'll make the motion.
And a second? All right. Motion to elect Mike Karowski as vice chairman of the school committee has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And now I'm looking for a motion for a secretary. Are there any nominations for secretary of the Abington School Committee?
I'd like to nominate Jeanette Larry.
I'll second it.
All right, are there any other nominations? All right, motion to close nominations for secretary?
I'll make motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Nominations are closed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have our reorganization. We are also, in our reorganization, we will be looking for members on the subcommittee, various subcommittees, business and finance, collective bargaining, building committee, policy review and update, time and workload subcommittee, school council liaison. So I'd like to ask the members of the committee to take a look at the subcommittees, think about how much time you are able to put into it, where you feel your expertise lies. And if you could send me an email telling me what subcommittees you'd like to be on, and then you'll be placed on the subcommittee that you choose. Are there any questions? Okay. So moving on, reading and approval of records. You have a copy of the minutes from our last school committee meeting on April 25th. Anyone have any questions, problems, corrections? All right, hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of April 25th, 2017, as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Since he wasn't here, that's a good thing to do. All right, the next thing, principal reports. Laura Monacino from Center School, our school improvement plan.
Good to see you. First of all, thank you so much for welcoming our new clients. You've done such a fabulous job, and I was getting a little emotional, but thank you for receiving them so warmly. Also, I'd like to thank this year's school council, in particular, for their commitment to having an outstanding final year at Center School. And then also their enthusiasm for creating a new program moving forward as we take up housing at 201 Glenowitz this coming fall. And then I wanted to just bring to your attention the outstanding results that we got on our school survey. And I did include that in the packet that went out to you. And we took that into account as we figured out the highlights from this year that I'd like to share with you, and also took it into account as we look forward to next year and the planning of the upcoming school improvement plan. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, so I'm just going to speak in terms of highlights. And when I look back at this past year, one of the things I really want to highlight, and the girls did a better job of it than I could possibly do, was the Focus K-2 program that we've implemented in all the kindergarten classes. As Mrs. Frederick said, last year, we started with it as just a pilot program, which was just in our all-day kindergarten classes in only one unit. This year, we were able to expand it to all the kindergarten classes, both half and the full day, and we did all the units in the program. And it has been incredibly well-received. The kids enjoy it. The parents are talking about it constantly. And you saw what came out of it, just remarkable, remarkable work done by these young children. Another thing that I'd like to highlight about this year is use of technology, and in particular, many of the teachers are using something called the Remind app. I didn't know much about it when I started this year, but it's increased communication between our teachers and their families and the students. That back-and-forth sharing information has been very well-received, and it was commented upon numerous times in the school survey. So we just know that that's something that's working and maintaining that communication that makes for a good school year. Also, lines of technology. We had a very successful Facebook page this year. I made every effort to get pictures posted almost every day, and the parents are liking and hearting, and all the emojis you can think of are on there every single day. And it makes them feel involved in the lives of their children, but they're at school. They can't see them, but now they know what's going on. They're seeing these pictures and the smiles and all the good work that's being done. Not as much with the Twitter account, but I'm moving further and further into that world. As I told Rich Mikroski earlier this year, I needed to learn how to work with a bird. And I'm getting better with the bird, so that's something to keep moving forward on. We had several very successful fundraisers. We, in the fall, did a We Scare Hunger food campaign and brought in over 1,000 pounds of food that were donated to the local food pantry. We had a jump rope for heart campaign and brought in nearly $3,500 for that. And then almost a last-minute campaign, pennies for patients. And even though it was done really quickly, we again raised nearly $1,500. So amazing things happening with young children, teaching them about giving back and making a difference in the community in which they live. And then another exciting thing that went on this year is we had many PTO-sponsored events. We had more than we've had in any other year, and that significantly increased the feeling of community between the families and the staff at Center School and the families between one another. They've gotten to know each other. They've gotten to know the other parents in their children's classrooms, and it's just created a very warm and welcoming environment in the community. So I see those as being the highlights of what we accomplished this last year at Center School. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
Looking forward to moving to the new school?
Nice segue. Thank you, Mr. Karowski. The next thing I wanted to talk about is the upcoming school improvement plan. We are putting together, and the council is so excited about it, a new program that we are naming the Abington Early Education Program. And playing off the Abington Green Wave, we are deciding to use a mini logo mascot of Little Waves. So forthcoming will be probably a lowercase a with a wave, perhaps, maybe an. And in general, what we're looking to do over the course of the year is really make this a premier program. And we're looking to feature separate preschool and pre-kindergarten programming. What we feel is that a lot of times, the kids who are older and have been in the program for one, sometimes even two years, are not getting as much exposure to the academic content that they might if they weren't with the younger kids who are just barely three coming in the door. So what we're doing is we're separating those two out. We will have the two programs. Preschool will take place in the morning with the younger students, and then we'll have a strong pre-kindergarten program in the afternoon with a heavier academic bent, really moving toward those pre-academic skills and early academic skills that the kids are now needing when they walk in the door for kindergarten. And one thing that we're looking forward to as well with the new year is maximizing the opportunities of being in a state-of-the-art, brand-new facility. We think there's lots of chances to utilize the outdoor space that is going to be surrounding us, making connections with the higher-grade levels, and hopefully entertaining having students come in and work with the kids, especially those that might be interested in early education, early childhood education as a career themselves at some point down the line. And then a big thing that we have going on next year is achieving NAEC reaccreditation. We do this yearly as a partial reaccreditation, but this is the fifth year, and so it is starting over from the very beginning. A daunting task at best, but we're confident that we're going to pull that together, even though we're doing it simultaneously with starting a new building. So there's a lot more detail in my plan, so if you have any questions.
I do, I've got a question, Laura. So since we're moving facilities, won't it, our accreditation, won't it cease? Like, we're not?
It does not. I spoke pretty extensively with them over at NAEC, and they said that we could transfer it over. It means a lot of updating to the portfolios that are in place, the program portfolio and the classroom portfolios. And we're actually getting a slight extension to start on it because we didn't want to put together the floor plans and everything for the new program and the new building and have them come and show up and do the site visit sometime in June and say, wrong program. But yes, they are letting us carry it over, just with a pretty extensive updating. Any other questions about the new school improvement plan?
I have a question about that app you were talking about. Have you been using that since the beginning of the year?
Several of the teachers have. I personally am not using it. Mrs. Frederick, you're still here, if you want to speak to it, it's been?
It's an app where you have different options. You can send out a message to the group, you know, parents, tomorrow's joke day, so if anyone wants to bring a joke to our class, they have that idea, or reminders of things. But it's also helpful if a child has, say, a rough night the night before or is tired. You know, parents can send me a quick message in the morning. But the best thing, now that I am a parent, the best part of it is, you know, you send your kids to this building every day for six hours, and you truly don't have, know what's going on in there. And so we are constantly sending pictures of what the kids are doing in their classroom. And parents, you know, they'll just love to see that, you know? And I didn't realize how lucky I was that I am in this day and age with my daughter, that, you know, a lot of my friends now have kids, they have no idea what the kids are doing. And I'm like, I wish their teacher had that, too. So it's been very helpful, and it cuts down on a lot of anxiety on both ends from parents and students, and they can ask a quick question. Sometimes it's easier than sitting for three minutes and emails or not getting back to parents right away, and it's been very helpful. And you can set it so that parents can not chat with each other. You can set it so that, you know, it's certain limitations, but it's also recorded. I can go online and print out, say, a conversation that maybe was something that should have been more formal, and it kind of went that way. I have that access to, you know, to just make sure that things are on record. So a lot of the teachers have used it, and I've got nothing but reviews from parents who just feel like they know me, and they know what's going on in the room, and they're just more comfortable.
How many staff would you, excuse me, how many staff would you say that use it out of the?
I believe it's four out of the five.
I want to say it's four out of the six.
Four of the six kindergarten and one preschool that I'm aware of. So pretty extensive. It's a small building.
And there's another one, Class Dojo. My daughter's major is in class Dojo, which is also similar, but she can actually go on those videos, so they have a little egg relay race, you know, and math, and she's like.
Thanks for sharing, I appreciate that.
I noticed Cassie nodding her head when you talked about the Remind app, and she wanted to add something.
Yeah, we use Remind in my English classes, too, in school, because our teacher can be like, oh, we're going to be in the computer lab today and stuff like that. The teachers don't get, like, the phone number of the students and the parents, you know? You have to, like, put in a class code, then you're connected to it. And it's just really useful for, like, deadline reminders and stuff like that. So it's like all great.
As a parent, I love it. It's a great, simple way to communicate with a teacher, sort of like texting with a teacher, which allows her to text me and tell me things about my son. I have one that uses classroom Dojo, one that uses Remind app, so it's great.
Is it a thought that you may move to a streamlined, if so many teachers are using it in the early childhood setting, that we would choose one that's working and?
That's a really good question. It's something to explore, think about, you know, piloting another one or just comparing the ones that we're familiar with, and maybe making a decision on a larger basis.
Laura, have you seen, with the, with the move into the new school, have you seen, like, an increase in enrollment in preschool, pre-K, from, let's say, this past year?
Yes, that's a great question, Mr. Coell. Our registration was so far up that we needed to add a full day to the preschool screenings, which was an increase of about 25 children over previous years. So it seems that the community is excited, that they're looking forward to the opportunities provided through this new building, and hopefully will be getting word out over time about this division between the preschool and pre-K and really build it up. The language that we used in that school improvement plan is just making a premier program, and we're really looking to get that word out.
Yeah, I was going to say, has that been well-received, the split? It's kind of still getting out there?
So far, it has, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
I just want to say that I've worked with Laura the last two years, and it's been a pleasure. I've really enjoyed it. I hope it continues. But the parents and teachers that I've worked with the last two years as well, they work very hard, and thank you for all you do.
Next, and so we get to hear from Matt McCurtin.
I'm going to bring a team to the podium. How we do things. So thank you for having me here.
I have three documents to present to you tonight, and they're really cornerstones for a new middle school in Abington that will encompass grades five through eight. Before I get into those, we had a combined school council of Woodsdale and Frolio School Council that met throughout the course of the year. And I'd like to publicly thank the members of that school council for all the work that they put in. It's a little bit different this year. Instead of updating documents that were existing, we were creating new ones. And instead of updating what is an existing school, we were looking at two existing programs and trying to align the group to a great third program that comes from those. So if you don't mind, I'd like to read all their names so I can have them publicly out there. I'd like to thank Mr. Summergrad, principal of Woodsdale and co-chair, Taryn Whitman, teacher at Woodsdale, Andrea Doyle, a teacher at Woodsdale, Anna Littenberger, a parent representing Woodsdale, Hina Korea, a parent representing Woodsdale, Pam Kalin, a teacher from Frolio and the secretary of our combined school council members, Timothy Hill, teacher at the Frolio School, Susan Terrell, parent representative from Frolio, Elizabeth Stock, parent representative from Frolio. And I should mention that Kate Rapese has been, had been our community rep for many years. She worked with me at school councils in North School, Center School, Woodsdale School, and was listed as our community rep for this committee. She was unable to make meetings this year, and she did pass this past spring, just recently. So, but her energy and the effort that she put in in previous years lives on in the document that we're going to present today. So I do want to thank her. So the first of those documents is our school improvement plan. And I'd like to begin just by reviewing some of the accomplishments from the school improvement plans that are currently in place at the Frolio Middle School and the Woodsdale. I'm going to update you on Frolio, and then Mr. Summergrad will provide you an update for Woodsdale. So as far as the Frolio Middle School goes, we had four goals. The first focused on student performance, increasing that through enhancements to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. This really turned into a technology-focused goal. A lot of our energy this year, as you heard from Laura earlier, was put into technology. We focused on that for two and a half days, professional instruction in the, in the fall, and then continued throughout the year in both team meetings that each individual department had, common planning time, faculty meetings, professional development days. We've used the SAMR model, which we'll continue using, that allows teachers an in, no matter what their current level of technology use, they can find that on SAMR, and that's usually the benchmark to measure their own growth throughout the year. The focus was on formative assessment, on instructional tools, on the use of Microsoft Office programs to share, to create, collaborate. And then, of course, on next-generation MCAS and all the preparation that we had to do. Both students and staff members went through a lot of training to be able to access that test online in a manner that was comfortable for students, taking a test in an environment that they felt comfortable with, to express their knowledge. Our second goal was the use of performance data to make informed decisions about curriculum instruction and assessment. We started the year with data team meetings, looking at MCAS data with department heads in each department at the Frolio Middle School. That led to further assessments and check-ins throughout the year, smaller pieces to check on goals and pieces that we set from there. Teachers used that data to create their own personal goals for their evaluation plans and also looking at what their, their goals were for individual classes throughout the year. You'll have to forgive me, I have a lot of pages to flip through. That's a paper tonight for you. The third goal was maintaining and initiating programs which foster a safe school environment that's substance-free, tolerant, respectful, and conducive to education. So we really, we're looking at our, our school-wide positive behavioral intervention system. That's something that seven and eight have in place, five and six, you have something different. And we'll be looking at that over the course of the next school year to build something new that can encompass grades five through eight. The signs and symptoms of suicide program is run in all health classes, with follow-ups done by our school psychologist and intervention team. We did partner with the Compass program for North River Collaborative to provide social work interns. This is year maybe six, I think, with them. Successful this year at Frolio. It's been successful at Woodsdale, and we look forward to continued collaboration with them. We did have monthly Green Wave ceremonies that recognized good character, random acts of kindness. Student council ran multiple events throughout the year in terms of fundraisers and school spirit. Our peer leaders took part in several community service activities, both individually and with the Frolio community. And they took part in the Jeff Coombs Memorial Race at a water stop. And recently, I was able to walk through the cafeteria downstairs, and Kristy Coombs was there with many of our peer leaders, and they were decorating rocks, maybe the names of service members who were cast in ribbons that Kristy will be using in upcoming events. That's a meaningful thing for our kids to take part in, and any students, particularly students at this age level, where they're developing their sense of self. And our school resource offices have worked with us throughout the year. In particular, they worked with our history department to implement lessons focusing on tolerance. And we do try to use a variety of modes of communication, all of which are listed there. I will say that coffee with the principal was lonely, mostly. I'm going to continue that tradition.
It was the coffee.
It was the coffee. I need better coffee. I'll agree. If there are no questions about that, I'll ask Mr. Summergrad to update you with Woodsdale's information.
Thank you, Mr. McCurtin. I would be remiss in not thanking him. Truly, he's listed us both as co-chairs, but Mr. McCurtin really pulled everything together and organized the meetings and did the bulk of the work, and I nodded along with what he was doing. It was apparent from our very first Woodsdale School Council meeting in the fall that the concerns and questions really about the melding of the two schools together, Woodsdale and Frolio, into the new Abington Middle School. And so Mr. McCurtin and I very early on scheduled all of our meetings jointly, and it really made a lot of sense for us to talk about the things going forward that we're going to make a five-to-eight program and a five-to-eight community. I'm looking through the exciting things that did happen in Woodsdale and sharing some of those with you, pulling out a few from the document. We began on a very, on a great base that Mr. McCurtin and the staff at Woodsdale had provided and had in place, and we tried to layer on top of those. So for our first goal around student achievement, we continued using RTI and trying to have kind of focused and targeted interventions for individual students, small groups of students and full class, based on the needs as we analyzed the data and looked at the students in front of us and how they were performing. So that was ongoing. At our common planning time meetings, we did some case studies where we would focus in on a particular student and try to determine if we were applying the right strategies to move that student forward. We referred to some of those as moving the needle, as trying to really determine where our resources could actually leverage some change for growth for students. Teachers continued, as they do throughout the district, in doing rounds and visiting other people's classrooms. It's no small feat, given the, the fact that we have to cover for them as they're moving around, but it is tremendously beneficial for teachers to get outside the four walls of their own classrooms and see, see the practice of their, their team, and that was very useful. We also worked towards a professional learning community at our faculty meetings, where we looked at, looked at some articles together and faculty members worked on reading. We chose several different books that they were working on together in book groups. So all of those things, we hope, combined to support what was already in place around excellent teaching and improving student achievement. As Mr. McCurtin mentioned, technology and also we've heard from Center School, technology was a big focus, really from the opening day of school, where we heard about technology being a focus. The teachers interwove in their student goals and in their professional goals this year for evaluations, almost all of the teachers in the building included a technology goal. And as Mr. McCurtin referred to the SAMR model, it's a way of sort of moving up from sort of using a projector, which is a replacement for traditional overhead projectors, to really starting to infuse technology in ways that enhance teaching and learning and transform the experience of students in the classroom. Based on the, the suite from Microsoft, we had lots and lots of Sways. I don't know how many of you have experienced Sways, but it's a, it's a powerful, improved model over what had been a standard PowerPoint or other slideshow. It really is, it's something that teachers could produce and something that students can produce, and we had lots of that happening in the fifth and sixth grade. We also broke lots of new ground. We talked as a system about things that needed to happen at the high school level in terms of coding, and we began to do a lot of that, sort of just tiptoe into it with our after-school computer club, and eventually, all of the students at Woodsdale were participating in some coding activities, including participating in the last two weeks in the national and worldwide Scratch activities. And that was highlighted by, there were students who were instructing the classes. Some very interested students from the after-school club stepped in and were actually teaching the classes how to go through the activities with coding. So I'm glad to say that we're well into the 21st century with the work that we were doing. In terms of building community and reinforcing citizenship, again, lots of things were in place at Woodsdale. We added monthly community meetings where we reviewed our expectations, celebrated the success of students in terms of their behavior, and I think Mr. McCurtin will find it very congruent with the positive behavior support system that he's using at Frolio already. I think he'll be ready to move right into that. We talk continuously about what we called our Code of Responsibility, basic expectations for behavior of students and adults at Woodsdale, and we tracked closely what we politely call office referrals. That's a fancy way of saying students being sent to the office. And in fact, we, as we tracked that, it was fewer than one student per day over the course of the year so far, and with incidents being resolved quickly for the most part and being of a, the kind of nature that with a student population of 354 early adolescents, they were very consistent with those kinds of behaviors and mostly things that we could resolve within school without, you know, bringing in families unless absolutely necessary. I have to say that I was impressed with the number of after-school options, and we ran three sessions of our after-school program for supplementary enrichment classes, as well as having sessions of tutoring leading up to MCAS and a program for math support that we ran from the fall into the spring called Math Boost. And truly, on any given day, there were 75 to 100 students, sometimes more, after school for these programs, including the kind of clubs beyond that. We have Care Center, which is an entire club devoted to doing community service and caring for others in the community. We have the Student Council that has produced a number of events for the school, including one coming up that I'll share with you, that on June 9th, we are rededicating the stained glass panel that was produced in 2002 to, in remembrance of the victims of 9/11. That'll be at 9:00 a.m. and on June 9th, Friday, June 9th. And the Student Council has been the driving force behind refurbishing that panel. It came down, as I understand it, it was up, and then when the new windows went in, it doesn't fit any of the panes of the windows, so it's going to be mounted on the wall to the left of the stage in the Woodsdale cafeteria, and we are going to have an unveiling of it that morning, and Kristy Coombs will be there as well for that. And while I'm thinking of it, we have a Memorial Day Assembly this week, Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m. with an honored guest, Richard A. Fitz, Jr. Many of you, I'm sure, know him and know of the, the street, Route 139 that meets Chestnut, but he'll be there to, specifically in memory of his father, Richard A. Fitz, Sr., who was serving in Vietnam. So, again, these robust clubs are a wonderful thing, and particularly in the winter months, we were thrilled with how many students were able to participate and be actively involved at school. I'm going to move, aside from the fact that I noted that I rode the bus, which was always an interesting experience. The consistent theme around behavior continues to always be in common spaces. The students who were sent to the office, rarely sent from class, but from lunchroom, recess, and, and the bus was where I'd get notification in those areas where we continue to have to do some work. We spent some, in spite of the fact that we knew all year, and especially in January, we knew for sure that we're going to be moving out of Woodsdale, we spent some, some good energy on maintaining the Woodsdale School, which is, kudos to our custodial staff and our maintenance staff and Mr. Lynn for the work that they've done, but our needs were met literally. We would see someone the same day when we said, "Can you check on this?" The speaker in this room doesn't seem to be very loud for announcements, and we would have somebody show up that day. And it was, the staff always felt supported in that way, and we appreciated that. We have, at the same time, had a lot of excitement and some nervousness about packing and moving, but back in March, when, when the staff went on the tour of the new building, their eyes popped and they were, it, it all shifted from worry to just wanting to be ready for this, and a thank you to you and the community for, for that fabulous facility. So people, people are eager for that. I'll leave it at that and see if you have any questions. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I have a question. Number two, when we talked about the additional laptop cap, is there, is the computer lab no longer a computer lab? Are we using computers on the...
Computer lab is still a computer lab and was used for tech classes, where that's where all that coding and after-school club took place. But we had, now we had a cart on each floor. One of them went away for a while to, to live at Frolio during, because of their needs for computers for the next-generation MCAS, but...
It came home.
It did come home, but it, but it, but a sign of how well-used it was, was people were gnashing their teeth. They recognized the need for it to be shared, but they really had, it's like when you add a lane to the highway, the, the use was happening in a robust way.
I was just curious, we still have the computer lab?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And as I understand it, that lab will still be there for the third and fourth grade.
Excellent.
Last, quick question. The after-school programs that you have, I know that they're for fifth and sixth grade, but are you planning on keeping them for third and fourth grade? Do you know?
Well, that's a wonderful question for, for Mr. Hawes and Mr. Rafferty. We did, when Jonathan Hawes visited the school, and I pointed those out to him, he seemed excited, but I don't know what the plans are for third and fourth grader.
We'll have to get back to you on that once Jonathan explores the feasibility around that.
Thanks.
And they, by the way, were self-sustaining. They're not part of the school budget.
Unfortunately.
Right. But we also provided financial assistance and waived the fee for anybody who requested it.
I'd love to see, under Future Projects, the island, that island has been worked for a lot of years.
Yes, Mr. Russell agrees with you.
Yeah. It wasn't even really an island, you cut across it. I was a big offender, ass map.
I wouldn't bring that up, Mrs. Larry. I will bring up that you were a big push behind the Generation MCAS school programs as part of the, the previous Woodsdale School Councils, so I will say thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Me, too. Thank you.
Now for some other documents.
So you have in front of you the 2017, 2018 Abington Middle School, School Improvement Plan. And it's comprised of four individual school improvement plan goals.
Page nine of the packet. Page ahead.
So I wanted to talk to you just a little bit about the Generation MCAS document, the process that we used to put it in place, because as I said, this wasn't one where we could take an existing document and update it. So members of the school councils, the combined school councils, were able to pull apart the existing school improvement plans from Woodsdale and from Frolio and talk about the action steps that were in place, what was working, what they wanted to continue to do, what things were, once, strong school improvement goals and action steps, but were not part of what we do on a regular basis and weren't by themselves improvement in nature. There are things that are improvement when they first come on board, the implementation of a new program, the implementation of a new process. But once it becomes what you do on a regular basis, it's part of what your community is, and it's not necessarily improvement anymore. There are other pieces that stay in there on a yearly basis that seem like they would fit that bill, but they are by their very nature improvement, things like data theme focus on continuous improvement and instructional practices. So the two committees were able to look at those pieces, pull out the ones we wanted to keep. The goals didn't align, per se. So, for instance, Woodsdale would have a separate technology goal and a teaching and learning goal, where the Frolio had those two put into one. So we created new categories and looked and said, "These are the ones that we want." We decided on the four goals, looked at the action steps we had. We tried to take those and narrow them down to a real focused plan as our first starting place for Abington Middle School. place for Abington Middle School as a foundational document. So that's what you have in front of you today, and I'd be interested in any questions you have, have opposed.
I'd like to commend you for recognizing there are some things that start out as an improvement plan that become part of your everyday working process, so that they don't just keep.
Over the years, with the recent school improvement plans, grow from four pages to five pages to 20 pages, there's those good things that we don't want to lose hold of, are removed from the plan, but in reality, they are, they're what we do.
Part of your everyday process.
They're still what we do, but they're not improvement by their very nature, they're part of the process.
So, under Goal Two, when we look at things like number three under Goal Two, to implement a grade five through eight student council.
Yes.
Is our, is that our overall vision, is that we will have combined, I would say, co-curricular groups like that for the students?
I think we have to be careful which ones we combine and which ones we don't. For instance, a student council is a very powerful thing to combine, because you have strong leadership at the seventh and eighth grade level that can serve as a real learning point for those fifth and sixth graders who become part of it. And the same can be said for things like peer leaders, Care Center that's at Woodsdale if it were to come over, those pieces. But when we look at other extracurricular activities, I don't know that I want a 10-year-old playing basketball with a 14-year-old at the school. So I think we have to be selective in the things we put in place with an eye on appropriateness and safety policy.
Yeah, I think we would want to also be very mindful of, I think, up until this point, we've been very, that it's too separate. You know, it's a middle school, but it's five, six, it's seven, eight, you know, so just in, you know.
A lot of the work this year was in preparation for the point we're at. The work that will happen from this point forward is coming together as one community of students in grades five through eight. And a lot of the conversations I have with our staff members is, we need to be mindful of the students that are going to walk into this big, beautiful building. And I was in there last Friday, and I was in awe. I don't, my office is ridiculous, by the way. Thank you, Mr. Shade.
Don't thank me. If I could have had one there instead of you, I would have done it.
Oh, we're moving in with you. We didn't tell you.
This won't, come on in. A lot of the work that we have to do is figure out what we are as a community and how we're going to put those pieces together. And I think the word you used in terms of mindful, we have to be very mindful about all the decisions that we make. I'm very blessed to have a strong team working with me, both with people coming from the Woodsdale and existing Frolio school staff. And I should, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Ms. Nali, who is our new assistant principal, has been an incredible resource for us as a school and I believe as a district. I don't want to speak to her, but if you would want to say that, I'd agree.
To talk about what we're thinking about.
I agree.
I do have a question, but I'm going to tie it into the math curriculum up through grades twelve.
Sure, sure. There are some tie-over pieces to the document that we'll talk about next, so.
I have another question.
Sure.
Under, and I hate to name these goals, so Goal Four, Goal Four, number four. Parent portal.
Yes.
Are we, what?
Know where you're going.
Yeah.
So parent portal is in use with seven and eight. As you know, I was principal of Woodsdale School for the last five years and center in North School before that, happy to be moving forward to having to middle school. Parent portal's not currently in use, grades one through six. I have been extremely impressed, not only with the teachers' use of it, but with the students' use of it. It's really kind of blown me away in seeing that kids that I had in fifth and sixth grade are now walking into the guidance department with their phone and saying, this is a seven to nine, but I want it to be an eight. And can you help me figure out how to get to that point? So I think, Jeanette, to answer your question, I'd like to see it in use, five through eight. I think there's some process we need to go through to get there. There's some requirements in the teacher's end to using a grading system and updating and pieces like that, and there are things that we need to work out before we get there. But long-term, absolutely.
I think it's great. I think students use it more. I mean, two have gone through, you know, and they do, they're constantly on it. Or if it's not updated, but that's, wait a minute, you know, and they know what they've done, and they do quite frequently go to it.
Yeah, it really is the parent and student portal, and they're taught to use it at the school, at the school level. We teach them how to access it, and then they go learn how to access it on their phone, and then they want that point, and good for them.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a good, encouraging point for them. But I think as we try to strengthen our partnership with parents, it's got to be used for, to strengthen that relationship.
I agree.
Any else have any questions?
So next on the list will be our Program Studies. So this document, again, is built off of an existing document, but it is very new in nature. So you should have memo. There was apparently a page missing, so I apologize. Provided a double-sided copy that I put through the copy machine, and apparently one of the pages didn't make it up. So you should have received that, or you're receiving that at this point now? So hopefully that will clarify any...
I think there may have actually been two sets of pages missing, because you go from foreign language, Spanish 1B, to develop a basic competency in listening comma, and then you go to the next page that says students in grade seven. So there's something missing there, and then at the bottom of the page I just read...
I think that's, this must go next.
It's a double-sided page that's not counted, so it is actually...
This is only, this goes here, because it's the accelerated algebra. So, like, at the bottom of the other one. Like, I think that one probably goes there, but I don't think we have that one.
Do we just get this?
Teresa just sent us.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. I was trying to save a little bit of paper and double-sided.
No, that's fine. And then I think on the bottom of the word says, frequently asked questions about math.
Sure.
It sort of died off.
And that should be it, the rest of that should be in the page you guys have.
Junior, high school.
Thank you.
Can I get one of those?
I will provide an updated copy with a whole set of pages for you.
Here, Peter, let's see this. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Missing this, but there's a missing word.
So, that document, the revisions hope solely is in grade seven. So everything that you see in there is for grade five and six that are brand-new. The elementary schools in Abington don't produce the progress size, but because Abington Middle School encompasses the grades five through eight, we want to make sure that grade five and six represented that. So the new courses, I'll just read through them quickly from the memo that I provided. Digital literacy, so that course, students at Woodsdale have had a half-hour of a computer class. We're looking to strengthen that, create a digital literacy experience, grades five through eight. English, Languages, Math, Music, Science, Social Studies. STEAM, which is a new course that we can talk about. Visual Arts, Health, Physical Education, those are all new for grades five and six, and for grades seven and eight, the new course would be STEAM. That new course, STEAM, comes from two existing courses, our math apps and our critical thinking and design course that has similar profiles to what a good, true STEAM experience is. Making it a STEAM course that focuses on the science, technology, engineering standards, integrates mathematics and arts standards into it as well, over a 60-day course instead of two separate 30-day courses. Should provide our students with a better experience of hands-on learning in the area of science and communication. Very happy to put that in. That will now exist, grades five through eight. We're hoping that our eighth graders will come out ready to graduate as engineers. I see that as a big improvement for us. The digital literacy, much the same, where we are including that now in grades five to six. We're updating our current computers classes in grades seven, eight, or through those computers. So the goal is to move from digital literacy up through to computer science, so students get ready to enter Abington's world. So that covers the deletions of math apps and critical thinking and design. And then there are updates to courses. Science is represented differently in this document than it was before. The trimester schedule with six-day cycles has been updated to show all of those continuing updates. And the student grouping section has been updated to include the heterogeneously grouped for all courses except English, Languages, and Mathematics in grade eight. The rest of the courses in the school, I'm sorry, homogenous group for those, the rest of the courses in the school are heterogeneously grouped. There's a lot of information. I know I've gone through it very quickly, but if you have time to adjust that and you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
So I just had a question on the path to calculus. Being an engineer, I'm just curious about the path to calculus. And I pulled out the high school program studies for math, and it looks like you go from grade seven accelerated to grade eight accelerated to grade nine accelerated algebra one, Teresa?
Yes.
To accelerated geometry in grade 10, to accelerated algebra two and trigonometry in grade 11, which then provides you a pathway to the calculus.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So now I want to go back to your goals. In Goal One, Part Four says investigate the imitation of heterogeneous grouping in all grade eight classes.
Correct.
Does that impact how this path to grade 12 calculus goes forward, or is it...
So the difference in there, when we look at how our students are grouped, are those classes that are homogenously grouped are leveled one and two, with the exception of math that has the accelerated class, okay? In levels one and two, the difference, if you read what's in the existing program of studies, boils down really to expectations and independence. But that accelerated course has a different curriculum, so they progress fairly. So if we were to look at heterogeneously grouping throughout, until that curriculum actually changes at the state level, that would allow us to make that change, we would continue to have that accelerated course to provide that pathway.
Okay.
Something that we would consider a discussion along the way, but I don't see currently how we could not have that without a negative impact on students who were invested.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? It's going to be an interesting year.
It's going to be a good year. I was very, little will admit, I was comfortable at Woodsdale over the past five or six years. It's a great place to be. I was excited to move to Frolio this year, and the challenges that were ahead of us at the beginning of the year, and the new ones that we find along the way, and then the challenges that we have next year, opening a brand-new middle school. They're exciting, and I'm happy to be part of it. I do have Ms. Erica Nali here, who is going to talk to you about our new Abington Middle School proposed student handbook.
Take a vote.
Peter, don't I approve that?
All right, please. I think the language here, we need the language for Program Studies, we should say Program Studies.
Okay, break it down. All right.
Can I just make one comment?
Okay.
Before we approve the course of studies, is it possible to add page numbers to this?
Yes, it's possible. I should say that page numbers are missing from a couple of our documents.
Right.
Because we have information that needs to be added as we finish up to all numbers, addresses, pieces like that, so before we start, we will let you know.
Okay. No, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that going forward, okay.
Sure, I actually had a conversation with the...
Okay, before we move on to the student handbook, can we have a motion to approve the revisions to the Abington Middle School's 2017, 2018 program of studies as presented?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Erica.
I'd just like to thank the school committee for reviewing this document, and also, again, thank the Woodsdale and Frolio school councils for their hard work on this. We also had a small subcommittee, so I just want to recognize Andrea Doyle for her hard work on that. In order to create this document, we took steps to look at the Frolio handbook as sort of our basis, and then we also looked at the elementary school handbook, and we reviewed components of surrounding districts five through eight handbooks, just to see the language that they used. We wanted to make sure that we kept in mind that we're now incorporating fifth and sixth graders, so we needed to make sure that the language was appropriate for all ages, five through eight. Again, the page numbers aren't in this document, but that's just because of the additions, but those will be added into here, so I apologize for that. We did make a couple of additions and amendments. I'd be more than happy to go through them one by one with you, or if you've had time to review it, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I guess, under cell phones?
Yes.
Maybe, because my background as an engineer, I like to have things very specific. It says continued violations will result in office detentions, but is there like a set number? Because what you don't want to do, you don't want to be inconsistent, you don't want to have three times for this person, four times for this person, because then that's just not going to, that's just not going to work.
Yep, so we're always consistent with any of our behavior protocols, but typically what we've been doing now is if a student gets caught with a cellphone, I confiscate it, I have it in my mailbox, that's their first warning. The second time it happens, they get an office detention with me, I confiscate it for the day and give it back to them at the end of the day. And then the third violation, they have an office detention, but their parents also have to come into the building to retrieve the phone for them.
All right. Do we, oh, Teresa? I just have a question tagging on Mike's cellphone. Is it realistic that we assume that they're going to power off their phones?
No, and that's something that we, we've run into that issue, because we do think there's an appropriate use for the cell phones in the classroom, there's all sorts of applications. But we just ask that the students ask permission of their teachers beforehand. I mean, we've had instances where they're in the middle of a lesson and the phone's ringing, and we understand things like that are going to happen, but this is more so the student that's trying to take out their phone to text somebody while the class is going on.
Basically, that's the same question I was going to ask, but I want you to repeat it twice. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Yep.
I was told that five and six were going to have recess, but I don't see it here.
Sure. Recession would be something that would be included directly in the student handbook, so I'm pretty sure five and six will have recess.
Okay.
It's going to be different than it is at Woodsdale. We don't have the large playground space that we would have. So right now, I anticipate that two to three classrooms at a time would be outside with enough adults, obviously, to maintain safety, and that they have their recess opportunity once a day.
Is that going to be before or after lunch, do you know? Will it be before or after lunch?
I think we've probably tried to do everything we did done before lunch, but we also want to look at lunches.
Right.
And see where those long portions of the day is, and provide a break, or it would be most helpful, I guess.
Makes sense. Thanks.
So just one quick clarification on the dress code. Just, again, after repeated offenses, is there, do you have a set standard there as well? And also, is this dress, was this dress code part of the initial?
Yeah, so there's parts of it, there's components from this dress code that incorporate the elementary and the current Frolio handbook, so we just wanted to make sure we are incorporating all aspects for the five through eight. But yes, it would still follow the same criteria of the warning and then the detention, but it would be consistent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just had a quick tagging on, under Mike's, under the dress code, I have one other comment. It talks about outerwear not being allowed to be, we are worn during the day. And then it says sweatshirts, sweaters, fleece tops, and blazers are permitted?
Yes.
Do we have middle school students that wear blazers?
I mean, we don't, if we could, I just wanted to be specific in there. That's actually...
We do have one student who comes in with a blazer.
I was just going to say, there is one student that does dress up, yep.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm going to stop and drop.
It just seemed very specific.
Yeah.
I thought of that word, too.
That word.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the revisions to the Abington Middle School's 2017, 2018 student handbook as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, can you unanimous? All right. Thank you, all three of you. We're moving on to the high school. Teresa Sullivan.
See, Abington Middle School has broken ground. We'd like to add recess, too.
We could have it on wave week Wednesdays. At 7:20.
Starting tomorrow.
At 7:20.
I'm going to, I think the student handbook is first.
Yeah.
Very few changes. First recommendation is to change wave week Wednesday, actually, common planning time. And so eliminating mid-year and final exam language specific to the student handbook outlined by the office was the way to find structured learning time. I think you have a second page that says the subject is common planning time in memo.
Definitely changes, describes the mid-year exam time.
Memo to us.
I don't think these do.
We have recommended changes. I don't have that. Do you have the same?
That's one, but the other one was a March 31st memo about the actual common planning time, but I can explain it. There were in 2013, 14, 992 structured learning hours. We have to have 990 by regulation. In 2015, 16, 16, and 17, we added common planning time days. We have 146 regular school days, and we managed to do 991 structured learning time hours. And what I'm proposing next year is 20 common planning time days that start at 8:30 instead of 8:15. The thought behind that was to avoid the 8:15 middle school start time that we currently do common planning time. We really don't have an idea of what that traffic is going to look like. I think we're all anticipating that that's going to be a traffic nightmare. So by delaying our common planning time, adding 15 minutes to those 20 days, we actually haven't had 20 days, but we scheduled 20. We've had 19, I think, every year. We found enough time. And the 11 and a half days, adding a half day as our last day of school for students, this, and I'll explain majors and finals along that, but the end result is 992.2 structured learning time hours. So we actually gained structured learning time by getting rid of mid-year exams, final exams scheduled by the office. And if you're not familiar, currently, they schedule them, we schedule them by period. So for example, period one exam would take place at 12:30 on Monday. Period two and three exam would take place on Tuesday. So we schedule, as an office, the whole school is having those exams on that day. This, after much debate and discussion through school council, teachers, was, and I would say the student reps on school council all for it, but we're going to allow, this would allow teachers to make that schedule in terms of, in their syllabus integrating policy by day one that they pass out to students, how are they assessing students? Are they giving a mid-year? Are they giving a final? How much would account? And obviously, I approve all of those, too, but for example, in the last common planning time with the math department, they had, what they were proposing as a department was quarterly assessments, and those sort of final quarterly assessments that count as 5% of the term grade. So right now, our mid-years count as 10%, the final as 10%, or total of a term grade, basically, 20%. This would give a lot more autonomy to individual departments, individual teachers. So many departments really would like to do something more around portfolio to some degree, which is not something that people show up and do in 75 minutes that the office assigns. I know history department was talking about a research quarter, sort of what might be, they choose, whether it might be quarter three, that they'll do a research project from start to finish, things that are not designated by the office. It felt like they would have more opportunity to do things like that.
So do you think by department it should be consistent?
I don't think it has to be. And I think, you know, our program of studies is broad, very small school, so there are a lot of singleton classes even, maybe in a bigger school that they, you know, all freshmen take all this, all, you know. I don't necessarily think it should be. Might change our mind a few years from now, but right now, I don't think so. We, you know, mid-years and final exams were all pre-mandated testing, all pre-MCAST testing. And we do so much testing now, and my understanding of next gen is, at the high school level, will probably be grades nine, 10, 11. So as it is now, we are, we also do remedial testing for all of those tests as well, so it's not just the spring testing. So between, you know, all the tests that we're administering as a district, state mandated, they're spending a lot of time in testing.
This sounds like it allows for more creative assessments, and we have, for a long time, put too much emphasis on, you know, test-taking, and there are some kids that just are not good test-takers that given a different kind of opportunity.
Average mid-year and final exam grade is one grade below their quarter average.
But could, one of the things that happened, as Terry outlined, is wave week Wednesday is a very productive, very successful program. And then now that one of the, you know, sharing the building and having a middle high school is going to be beautiful, wonderful, and transformative for the district, but there are things to work around as we do this. There's no perfect solution. One of the things that happened was because of the start and the end times, there was a problem with wave week Wednesdays occurring and having people arrive at the same time. So what Terry and people at the high school have done is found a very creative way to maintain wave week Wednesday, and actually, I think, improve their testing cycles at the high school and add time on learning, because this adds, this adds that for the high school.
We had to work on our schedule anyway, the idea that we had to make three lunches, too, so it was, you know, might as well try to figure this out.
As Terry said earlier, the program of studies, the, when kids learn the expectations in a class about the grading, the weighting, and the program that's going to take place for them, Terry sees those. Terry will see those before they go out in terms of the assessments and the work that's going to be done. So it's not going to be, you know, kids are going to do things that aren't meaningful, that aren't rigorous. Those, these assessments, I believe, will be, they'll just be more meaningful.
And I think the difficult part is, you know, with the meaningful piece, a teacher could have 100, 120 students that they're giving assessments to in that period of four days or three days. How meaningful is it when they have to correct them, grade them, post them, figure their averages, and turn in everything and be able to do it on a day? So they've had to modify anyway, and it does feel a little bit like exercising compliance, and I think this will be a lot more productive. And I think they're looking forward to opportunities to do something different. So I'll move on. Instruction of records, this is really just, we don't have to keep temporary records, and as we start to pack things and realize what we are maintaining, if you get a chance to stuff in the high school library this week, we give books that date back. I mean, it's just piled sky high with all the interesting kinds of things. But one of those things we're keeping is temporary records for three years. We don't have to do that. We already keep the permanent record for 60 years, so we would like to propose that we give the student a temporary record at final graduation, not on graduation day, but at graduation practice, at rehearsal, they get a copy of their report card if they have an IDP, their health record. We'd also like to put anything else in, we give them a temporary record, and have them sign off that, you know, I received my temporary record. And this language is in two places in handbook. It's the same thing, but it's in destruction of records and in student records. And the last proposal was simply to oust Cassie Morando. No. To move the student rep from senior student to a junior student. We talked about this at school council. We have two students, actually, we have committed one at school council, but we've been lucky to have both a junior and a senior, and the junior stays two years. But for a senior, as thoughtful and engaging, important message that they have to offer, they also don't have a lot of skin in the game with the policies that we are proposing, you know, moving forward. So we'd like to propose bumping that back to the juniors.
Cassie's shaking her head. That must, that.
Yeah. Awkward.
Pretty compliant.
You think it's a good idea?
Yeah, she has the microphone last at graduation. She knows she has the last chance. I love my speech, too. It was due three times. Any thoughts on that?
Any other questions, comments? Okay. If there are no more questions, we need a motion to approve the revisions to the Abington High Schools 2017-2018 student handbook as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous? School improvement plan?
I'd like to thank the school council members, teacher Susan Crowley and Laura Lucois, co-chairperson, also of the university. Paula MacNasco, Steve McGuire, Alicia Morando as parents, and Ellen Marison, student rep, and student reps, Leah, Lessey, and also secretary who did a one for the, eight minutes for us. And just Principal Esther Sullivan and the school community reps on the board. I think on page six, there's some highlights of student achievements. I'm not going to read them to you. I would like to just note, number one, that we did bring our accountability, that's something we're pretty proud of. And then it's two, three, and four, where our MCAST scores still all above the state average. And the others are a lot of co-curricular activities. If you see the Monday message or the daily announcements, you know, there's things going on every single day. Page eight is a summary of last year's, I picked some highlighted goals, mentioned some of the things that, in each of the goal areas, such as, you know, moving levels, adding computer science programming, adding that second international trip, travelers with us tonight, the Italy and Iceland trip, the big hits. Goal number two, researching best practices for social emotional support amongst of our students. As a student support team, we started using technology to add notes to tracking students. It seemed to be a lot more productive so that the student support team has access on our X2 student management system, so we're not all keeping the exact same notes. We can add it right there. We also took the DESI behavioral health self-assessment, our team did. We broke it up and haven't done a lot around identifying our weaknesses, we mentioned our weaknesses, but we haven't had a chance to get back to that. I hope that we'll bring that in the opening of next year. Goal three, still continuing to analyze performance data in all of those areas, particularly, I think, with our special needs subgroups, working hard at developing that curriculum for algebra, geometry, and biology. That was new this year, so I don't really know what impact that has had yet. We will see when we get the results. And we'd also say some of these things, like the second one there in goal three, departments are analyzing things like research and writing expectations, are meeting together in common planning time. So not only are they meeting as a department, but we have at least two of those days a year that they have to do interdisciplinary. So it might be art and history, it might be science and English, who actually develop some reading program, for example, in a couple of those meetings. That was also a NEAS expectation, the one that we hadn't been able to manage, so we're making great strides there. And obviously, still supporting a safe and substance-free, respectful environment conducive education, proposing a new schedule. We took a lot of time on it. I know we didn't necessarily agree, you know, to implement it, but that was, we spent a lot of time on it. I think it was helpful and thoughtful to look at it, anyway. And we're doing a lot of great transition activities for staff and a little bit for students. We haven't been able to get students in as groups, but we're kind of pushing for that, and we'll be organizing some summer activities for orientation. The only new goal is, on page nine, is goal number five, to begin the NEAS self-study process. They informed me recently that that's a three-year process rather than an 18-month process. I was thrilled. And, you know, in the new goals, I think there are things that, you know, are not any different, really, than you've seen before. We're using technology to collaborate. We're still working to review, I'm always going to be aligning our curriculum. Every time we add a new course, we need to add and align the curriculum. NEAS is going to look at our curriculum very, that's probably the very first thing they're going to work at. I told you about the common planning time. I think I should ask you, is there anything in those goals that you have questions about?
I didn't have any questions.
You know?
When we're done with the sample question, when we wrap up with this, I have a housekeeping question.
A housekeeping question? Is there anyone else that has any questions about the improvement plan?
Teresa, if it's a three-year study, when do we, so where are we?
We started yesterday.
So it's not 18 months.
Started yesterday.
So three years from now.
It will be 2020.
Twenty twenty.
Whether it's the fall or spring, I don't know, and I won't know. So we do have specific goals in there, so I've already asked volunteer, some co-chairs. So Laura Luco, Kim Akew, have volunteered to co-chair the steering committee, for example. So the first thing, we have a webinar actually scheduled next week, I think, so that'll be our first intro. So that's our webinar. Our webinar will tell us what to do next.
Okay. Good.
Did you have something you wanted to say now?
When we're done with the improvement plan.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else on the improvement plan? I think it's time for you to have your housekeeping.
Okay. We got to vote on the handbook, so we're done. We don't have a program of studies. Great?
We did that.
We already voted on the handbook.
Good. Sorry. We're running out of meetings for the school committee, so just want to make sure we got through it. We're good. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Great. Yeah.
Okay, the other two.
Consideration. All right. Go ahead.
Sorry. The other two items with the international trips, right?
That's.
Okay. So we are proposing two international trips. I believe you have those in front of you. We have world travelers here with us tonight, all who have been on the international trips most recently. Ms. Flaherty, do you want to speak about Costa Rica, or do you have any questions?
I, just a general question. What was the motivation behind going to these countries versus going someplace else? I guess what sort of?
Well, I was fortunate enough to have gone on the Iceland trip this year, and it was incredible, just the amount of adventure and excitement of the kids. I mean, when I first, this was my first time being a chaperone, and I know, I'll get right there. When they were telling me about it, I'm like, you get all these kids to pay this money? Like, I was surprised. But the interest and the excitement and the pride they have in these trips, I mean, most of these kids paid for at least half themselves. They're so invested in what they're doing, and they're really, they were so good in Iceland. I mean, that went with me.
Oh, absolutely.
But they were just so excited about what they were doing, and they loved the adventure piece of it. So for me, and I know you already have tons of paper, so I don't know if you want this or not, but I just wrote out the reasons why I chose Costa Rica, because honestly, that was just a privilege for me to go with them. I didn't intend on heading up a trip next year, but the kids asked for it. They said, I know they had already had plans in the works for your Scandinavia trip, and they said, would you do one to a Spanish-speaking country? Because they wanted to go and use their Spanish. And of course, how do I say no to that? So I was like, absolutely, let me look into it. I knew they had gone to Spain last year. And I know Spain is a wonderful country, and the European culture is a draw for them, and I feel like they're really experiencing something different. But I thought, because they had done it last year, it would be nice to go somewhere else. And I've been to Costa Rica before, and it's an incredible adventure, very different than here, so they would not just be learning the language and using the language that they've learned in class, but they would get to see volcanoes, they would get to go whitewater rafting, they would get to see how coffee's made and the chocolate, and just the landscape of Costa Rica is a wonderful adventure and seeing their enthusiasm for Iceland. I thought it was similar to that in that we could provide adventure, and they're so busy and active the whole time. It's a different sort of experience than probably going to museums, but it's almost like the landscape provides the, you know, they're getting the culture just from being with the land, and they get to see animals they haven't seen. There's a lot of geological formations, which will be interesting after Iceland. I noticed a lot of the same kids that went to Iceland were at the information meeting saying, ooh, I want to go to Costa Rica. But we had a great information meeting, and they, there's a lot of interest in Costa Rica. So I did write the reasons why I chose Costa Rica, highlighted some for you. On the backside, you'll see, I know you had itinerary in there, but I have played with it a little bit based on, and it's on the backside of why Costa Rica. It kind of highlights, you know, daily and easier-to-read formation. So, and I liked, it also cost was a little bit down with Costa Rica versus Spain. When you go to Europe, it's a little bit more expensive. Costa Rica, you get a lot for your money. The, all the meals are included, the hotels, the flights, which is nice. So I'm trying to keep it, originally, we had thought 2,700. Now we're up to 2,900. Hopefully, that would be the final cost, and that's because we added a snorkeling excursion and whitewater rafting, which, having been there, those were like my two favorite things to do, so I thought I want them to experience that. And I've been working with the. And I've been working with the EF tours, who are wonderful, but they kind of, once the itinerary is in place, they're your guides when you're there. So that's why before we had the itinerary set, I wanted to give my two cents and make sure, if it was a trip I was going on, are they doing the things that I would want to do? So, any questions?
Do you have the 26 to 30? What happens if you have more students?
Yeah, we do.
Are you trying to limit?
Well, based on the information meeting. We had 26 in Iceland, and it was kind of a magic number. It was a great experience having smaller groups. I think when you get into bigger groups, it's not that we don't want them all to have the opportunity, but I think something gets a little lost in that you're always counting and seeing everything. And when it's a smaller group and more intimate, I think we can keep a closer eye on things. There can be more interaction with that group, more bonding. 25 is the magic number because you get a private group. We don't want to be matched with another school. They did that your first year, right? And I heard that that was a little problematic, just because the schools had different things they wanted to do. The kids didn't see things the same way. So I wanted to have that. 30 is kind of my magic number, although Karen Daisy has been on several of these trips, and she says probably accept a couple more because there will be kids that drop out. 30, the price goes down a teeny bit if you hit 30. So that's kind of why I was thinking 30, 31, 32. But, and I mean, this was my first time chaperone, so I was lucky enough to go on a 26. But in talking with some of the other chaperones, they seem to think the smaller group in their experience was a good thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Because I haven't done it with a bigger group. All I can speak to is the 26 we had, and it was wonderful.
Do you have two other, or two other people lined up even if we get to the magic 26? Which I'm sure we will.
Yes. Well, Kate Casey is going to go.
And you.
And me. That's two people. Karen Daisy, I believe, is going to go, although she's going on the Scandinavia trip. But to be honest, I really, she's interested in going on it and where she's had the experience and she and I have worked together, I would feel very comfortable having her as well. But I would also like to have a male chaperone, at least one, if not two. So I have spoken with Matt Campbell. He hasn't fully accepted my offer yet, but I am hoping. I don't think it will be any problem to find another person if he doesn't. And I know there's plenty of people. I would love to have not as many as we have perhaps, too. Any other questions?
When did you have the informational meeting?
Do you have the informational meeting? Last Wednesday? Last Wednesday? And it was so well-attended. Kids were excited. It was so fun for me because I teach middle school now to see all these faces that I had in seventh and eighth grade and think, oh, my gosh, you're going to be juniors and seniors next year. But they were so excited about the prospect, and they've heard such good things about other people that have gone on trips. I think it's a wonderful thing that they want to travel and see the world and use what they're learning in class. And I don't think it's just Spanish that they pick. I mean, I know in Iceland, it was a lot of science. I think we'll see a lot of that type of thing. And luckily, I can help them with the Spanish piece, but we do have a guide there the entire time that can speak to the scientific aspect of it. That wouldn't be on me, obviously. I can do a little research, but I learn on these trips, too. Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you for your consideration.
So you're going each trip separately? That's the Costa Rica trip, and Matt Holt's going to the Scandinavia.
Did you prefer?
Yes.
Okay. So if there are no more questions, a motion to approve the international field trip in February 2018 to Costa Rica for juniors and seniors who meet the criteria as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? That one is approved?
So our second trip to the Scandinavian capitals, traveling to other countries of Norway, Denmark, and Sweden. It would take place over April vacation 2018. We are looking to keep that magic number, 25 students, probably open it up to a couple over, just to allow for that situation where one or two students may drop out after initially applying. But it just, it's a good-sized group to travel with. I have had the opportunity to travel on two trips. I went on the initial trip with Laura Lucco, Karen Daisy, and Peter Sorino back in 2015, who just traveled on the Iceland trip this past April. And I can honestly say, you actually see a change in the kids when they come home from these trips. They're so excited. They've seen another part of the world, they've seen another culture, sometimes several other cultures. Even if they have not had the opportunity to study these particular languages at Abington High School, just that exposure, it kind of opens their world. And nowadays, with technology continually shrinking the globe, I think it's important for our students to see some of these other cultures, see other parts of the world. And there are many cross-disciplinary opportunities, just working with other currency. You know, that's something that just, kids, they get a kick out of it. It's just like, oh, wow. Like, everything they speak in terms of dollars and to actually not talk in terms of dollars, in terms of Icelandic krona or some other currency, it's kind of interesting, you know, something that, you know, would cost $30 and Iceland might cost 3,000 krona. And kids, you know, they just, learning about the differences in different money systems is eye-opening, as well as, you know, in these countries, it would be nice to travel to a part of Europe where none of these other trips have ventured so far, to travel into Northern Europe, that all the tie-ins, the things they've learned in their history classes, again, the science and geological aspects of these just different areas of the globe. So it, there's really a lot of opportunities. And it couldn't be more different than a trip to Costa Rica, which would probably still have some stone in the ground in those countries. So I don't know if you have any questions for me?
This may, it's more of a process question. So how do the students get selected again to go forward?
There's an application process. They have to first submit a personal statement, just kind of identifying what it is they're looking for, what they hope to get out of this global travel opportunity, as well as kind of presenting themselves to the chaperones. I mean, in many cases, we've had these students, at least one of the chaperones has had these students in their classrooms, so we know them a little bit. But getting a sense for who they are, what it is they're looking to experience as they grow, maybe where they're going to go to school, and how this might help them in that process. So they prepare this written statement. It comes to the chaperones. It actually gets turned in this Friday. And if there are excess applicants at that point, then we go into like a lottery system and determine who's going to go on the trip that way.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just one more. So if you have a set of students going on the Costa Rica trip in February, and you have another set of students going in April, will preference be given to the students in April who have not yet gone to a trip, or will students be allowed to take two trips?
Students have to select on, with the form that they were given last Wednesday, they have to pick a primary trip. There is a box that they can check saying, if I'm not selected for this trip, would I be interested in the alternate trip? But that's also, you know, understood that if somebody, someone just can't go and apply to both and bump another student who hasn't had an opportunity.
If so, on the same vein as what Mike's talking about, if we had a student that went to Iceland or Italy this year, and we get to the lottery system next week for our other students, do the students who have yet to participate have a better opportunity? I guess, are we waiting, you know, you, Mike, you got to go to Italy already. Wendy hasn't had the opportunity to go, and we're at the lottery. Would it then be, do we give consideration?
I suppose that could be like a tiebreaker-type thing, but...
Can I just talk for one second?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe Cassie, didn't you go on two trips with us? I think that limiting them to one part of the world limits them. So in the past, we've opened it up. So if they've been on one trip, there's no preference given to people who have never traveled versus people who have, because we're going to a different place. If we were going to run the same trip every year, then we would have considered it like, okay, well, you're not going to go to Spain again over somebody else, but because it's a different experience.
I get that.
We've opened it up.
So if we have, say we get to, we're at the lottery part, we've got more kids that want than we can take safely. We've got two students left. One's traveled, one hasn't been accepted, or maybe didn't get to go because there was too many kids the previous year.
We put them all in the same, on the same model.
So when you say lottery, you're putting the hats and the name, picking them out?
Although, I think you should say, because you didn't, you explained the application process, but there is also, there's a behavior component.
Yes, which is new this year.
Too. And I think that's important to address because we can't...
That is very important. One thing that we are adding this year, and it's similar to the vetting process for when students are admitted to the National Honor Society, is after we have the names of applicants, we will prepare a form that goes around to every faculty member. And there are different criteria as far as...
I think it's character, responsibility, and behavior.
Yes.
And what we just asked every teacher to anonymously rate the applicants who have applied after their letter has been accepted on those three criteria, because that's the kind of travel that we're looking for. So much like they would for a National Honor Society, they would vote on those same three, basically, I think they have the same three characteristics. And so then it gives us a better process to understand which students would be suitable to take out the country for safety.
But it's anonymous?
I think that's how they run a National Honor Society.
Yes. Oh, yes, it is anonymous. Yes.
And it's subjective opinions of teachers on students?
It's a rubric based on, for National Honor Society, it's character, leadership, you know, and it's the same thing that they're developing. And obviously, there's, at any point in time, social probation might be part of the...
Would trump, they wouldn't be accepted.
Yeah, so it would be a school activity that might be, you know, that there might be, so you're not traveling anywhere, we're not taking you anywhere, we're not going to dance, and you're not going to, you know, so that...
Right, any prior violation would kind of take their application out of the mix, right?
Correct.
Well, not any, no, not any.
Probably most.
Well, if they're on social, well, if they're on social probation...
Oh, yeah, yeah, social probation.
Yeah, they can't be currently under any...
Anything, right, that's what I'm saying.
But if they had brought a cellphone, you know, to class, so that wouldn't discount them from being a candidate.
What if it was off?
We're going to struggle when we join schools with your rules and our rules.
So are we now, so we're using the National Honor Society criteria for these...
Form, set format.
Yeah, not the exact criteria, but a similar type format.
Responsibility, character, and behavior. Because we wanted to replace leadership, because we didn't think you necessarily would have it going on a trip like this. So this is a way to gain leadership skills, so we're not anticipating that all students would come to have leadership skills.
I still have to pull on Jeanette's comment here, because if you have two students equal across everything, one has gone on a trip within, whether she or he was a junior or senior, and this other person has never been on a trip, I believe, my opinion is that the person who has not been on a trip is the one that should go, not the person who's already been on a trip.
Regardless, on destination.
I see where you're coming from on that. I just would struggle about, for example, we don't say that the, you know, the basketball player who played football, you know, when we start cutting members of the basketball team, we don't save, you know, spots for people who hadn't participated in one or the other. I just, I'd want to be careful that we really know what we, what the equity pieces are.
Have there been any issues?
I don't think there have.
No.
I went to kids twice, and it was fine.
But did you exclude any?
Right, that's what I'm getting at, exclusion, not acceptance.
The kids that were not taken on the trips, it was for behavioral reasons or, you know, past infractions, things like that. It wasn't, oh, we're just going to cut it at this number and you're not going to go, but we're going to take someone that has gone on another trip. That hasn't happened.
So we, have we had students that we had too many and just were a student in good standing, you know, had no options?
First year, we had to have a lottery.
Yeah.
I think opening it up to two trips, I think the second year, we had to have a lottery too. But opening it up to two trips, we didn't have to have a lottery last year.
Last year?
That's who's talking about.
This year, I'm sorry, this year.
This year's...
I already went.
Because they were still...
That was about 45, 50. Yes. Because we didn't lottery anybody this year, this current year, for two trips.
That's the first time we've had two trips in a year. And I think the other piece that we're noticing, and there was a request for a second trip on a different vacation day because, or vacation week, because of athletics, frankly, kids were having to choose in February, for example, either I'm going to go to basketball practice or hockey practice, or I'm going to go on the trip. And there were coaches and concerns and plays about missing practice, missing games. What do you do? Do you save them a spot? Do you, so kids actually requested a second trip, you know, to be in a different month, you know, a different season, actually. So this kind of gives them that. Even if they said, you know, Costa Rica, I'd rather be in Costa Rica than Scandinavia, but it works better for my schedule, they might choose based on their own schedule.
No, I think the idea of having trips is great. I just worry about that it isn't an, that it becomes a non-equity issue or inequality when we get down, if you got to the point that you have to bump someone, that's just, I'm throwing it out there, that, you know, not that people can't choose to travel to different parts, but if you have a student...
Always going to be an equity issue. I mean, I think I've tried to budget for scholarships so that, you know, families, students who couldn't afford it, that we could have maybe two scholarships that we would lottery, or part, you know, money towards a trip. But, you know, so you see what you're saying. I don't know if, I don't know if that's...
But there have been students that have been denied to go, students in good standing, we know that. I mean, I know a student, applied both years, couldn't go, because it was a great, I think, interest, which is good. Not to, well, you can only take...
Behaviorally, didn't make the cut, sort of?
No, accepted, but there was, there was too many kids. I mean, we have to draw the number. We, I mean, you have to draw the number, we all know that, because it becomes a safety issue. I agree, you want to have a small, as Senora Flaherty said, you spend 24/7 just counting heads, you know, and...
I'll be senora.
The other benefit you have is that you're taking juniors and seniors, and they have, so they have four whacks at it now, because of two trips in a year.
That also brings us to that same point. They've got four chances at it, but actually they only have two, because you're not looking back at the year before. And that's what, I mean, I think if they've, if you don't have enough slots and a child has gone on a trip the previous year, that should have a bearing on it. Just as they should be able to see more than one part of the world, the child that's being eliminated should have a chance to see at least some other part of the world.
Only issue with the lottery portion of it, surely only becomes the issue when it hits the lottery point.
Right, right.
But it sounds like we're, I mean, the interest seems very...
Do we have like preliminary numbers from the, from the initial meeting?
And there were people...
Eighty-two in the interest, in the interest meeting? There was also, there's also the third trip that you approved last month?
Right.
Was there a service trip? So that might explain, you know, also, broadly.
And I think there was eighty-two at the meeting and some that couldn't go, that the applications, eighty-three. Yeah.
I'll give another few.
Right, there's one at our house that we weren't... That's a lot, so, I mean, you've got to think. And there will be attrition, people will drop off. If we reach, so 25 is the group number to get a better rate? If we are at 25 and...
Thirty makes the rate go down. Twenty-five gets us the private.
So if we're at, if we're at private and people drop off after we've already started, do then the other kids have to, do we take more or do the other kids pay more?
We have not in the past reopened the application process.
So then the price goes up for the remaining ones? Or do kids have to pay even if you back out?
At some point. At some point.
Well, if you're going to 30, it's not an issue, because 25 through 29 would be the same price, so if a couple dropped.
So really, it's...
So the thing is, that's why I'm hesitant to do, even though I really don't want more than 30, I, I've been advised by Mrs. Daisy that I should get a couple extra, because there's always been a couple that have dropped. So if I told them a price at that point, I would feel awful if we lost a couple people and it made the price go up. Honestly, what we'd probably do at that point would be fundraise or something. Honestly, what we'd probably do at that point would be fundraise or something, so we could keep the price where we originally told them it would be, if that was the issue. But it also affects chaperones when you get, like, if we're going to say thirty, we need to have thirty, so we would probably have to have a few extra, because thirty would give us another chaperone, too.
It's a lot of work for the chaperones, they're exhausted.
Oh, yeah.
Late hours and.
Well, I was saving it for the end, but I was going to say, you know, thank you for the extra time and energy and responsibility and emotion, I guess, that's got to be draining, because when you're taking thirty teenagers that belong to somebody else anywhere, that's a lot.
You take responsibility, but it's, it's a privilege, too.
Yes.
I just had one question on the more the itinerary part of it. It said it begins April vacation, it goes along to April vacation. In the itinerary, it has a two-day extension to Finland, is that?
No, we're not taking that extension, so we're going to do the nine-day trip.
Okay. I noticed you mentioned Finland at the beginning, too, so that's why I was wondering.
So I get, I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm in the same boat as Kathy.
I mean, we're, I, I think we're in agreement, that taking these trips is wonderful, and we want to approve the trip. But I think we're also in agreement that if you get to a point where some kids are not going to go, we would appreciate you looking at whether they'd gone on a trip the previous year as well, instead of just whether they'd, would you consider doing?
I think we would consider it, take it under advisement, I think we'd need to look at it, I think I, I don't feel comfortable, you know, committing to that as policy tonight, because I haven't had an opportunity, there's a lot of other chaperones to talk to, that, you know, haven't, didn't come here tonight, and want to.
Does the committee feel comfortable approving the trip without looking at how the lottery would be handled?
I do.
Well, we just. We already approved one, so.
I know, I'm thinking that.
Everybody goes Costa Rica.
Aren't you glad you went first?
I am, and to be honest, I'm probably the one that would have to go to lottery, maybe, because it's the first trip, and then, yeah.
And maybe something going forward, we should, as a committee, make the, make a policy decision to say that if you have kids that have gone on trips, and you have equalization across, you know, all the spectrum of, you know, education and behavior, and if a student hasn't been on a trip, then that student should be given the first priority to go on the trip. And I don't think we can do it for this.
And I think that's why we already approved the other trip last month, we have to look at that. I think all of our trips, you know, whether we do DC, or Florida, or, you know, I don't know, I think we allow everybody, but I want to look at, that's why I'm not prepared, I don't know about all the music trips we take every year, we do, sometimes there's cheerleading trips that go to, you know, that are out of state also, I just want to make sure I have all that information before I commit to what we're doing.
But that's different, I think, I mean, the cheers go to, the cheering, the cheerleading team goes to Florida, we're not asking that the rest of the teachers to.
I would, there's, there's, the students who weren't necessarily on the team that won the tournament, so there's fall cheerleading, winter cheerleading, probably spent around a month on who actually goes, the team that won, or the team that is in place in the tournament, and then do the flyers, you know, do the, this, so, yeah, I would say, how do we decide everybody?
No, I understand, I would totally agree with that, because it is a different time when that award happens. But what I was going to say, do you then anonymously survey the teaching staff on their characterizations? I don't think you do.
We haven't.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so I think that's, we're kind of comparing.
Although, some of the music trips, we have said, as administrator.
Oranges and apples, you know.
So they have to be academically eligible, also.
Right, anyone, I would think, that's a baseline.
I would hope that that would be applied. Could we ask you, as a group of chaperones, to discuss that, we're not going to tie, without tying it into this approval? Is that, is that okay with the board?
Yeah, and I think before, I mean, more than just, more than just kind of like what we did when we were, when we had differing views on the school start times, it wasn't just, oh, that you go and look at it, that, you know, we instructed Peter to, next year, this is what we are going to do. So I think that's, that's my feeling, is that, because these trips are going to continue, they're a great thing, they should continue, but that there's more than just a looking at, and that it comes back to us with some type of something in the beginning of next year, so we're prepared for the spring, you know, the winter and spring of, we are eighteen, eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, and I think if it becomes policy, we could put it in the handbook that way, or, I mean, if that's.
Just, I guess, have more, you know, more than just discussions, I guess, is my thing. Because I think, once we get in the new school, that there's going to be so many other things that you're doing, like, that's going to fall off the radar.
I think at this point, none of us have done that, because not one of us is in charge of international travel for Abington.
Right.
It's just something we do randomly. So I think that, I think that probably is a piece of it. So none of us can actually.
They'll be negotiated in the next contract.
Go to make a decision on something that we're not in control of.
Right, so maybe then it's the administration, and not really chaperones' responsibilities.
So I'll get back to you by the beginning of next year, after there's deliberation at the high school level with a recommendation on how that lottery be handled. Is that all right?
Isn't it just, just a thought, isn't it a possibility that if they do not get accepted, that we could almost give them something, I mean, this is just something to consider, like, you would have, so you would have, you would be accepted on the next trip without being put in the lottery for future, like.
Most of the senior.
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, I think, I think that would, might be a pathway forward, so, but I think we'll wait.
And if one sits in place, that would be easier to.
I think what we're doing is we're asking people, the people to look at it and come back with us, come back to us in the fall with.
High school can deliberate on it, come up with a recommendation for it, we'll make sure it comes back to the committee for next year.
Do we have any more questions specifically on the trip to Scandinavia?
No.
No.
All right, so I'll be looking for a motion, a motion to approve the international field trip in April 2018 to the capitals of Scandinavia for juniors and seniors who meet the criteria as presented.
I'll make a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you.
And I think, I just want to say, I think we all feel that these trips are very valuable.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I want to repeat, thank you for taking the kids, somebody, thirty teenagers that are somebody else's on these trips.
After spending eleven years chaperoning on band trips, I fully appreciate what you're doing, but there's nothing better than seeing things through the eyes of kids. All right, moving on, Business and Finance Subcommittee, propose revisions to the use of school facilities, policy, and fees.
So the Business and Finance Subcommittee, Mike, and Karowski, and Wendy, and multiple youth groups, and Felicia and I met and deliberated over what you have looked at over the last month, and is in your packet again. It's not a perfect policy, a perfect policy, a perfect fee structure doesn't exist, but, I mean, we looked at a dozen different systems in the South Shore, we did talk to everybody in the community that would be willing to talk to us, some of them three and four times, and we met with Wendy and Mike a couple of times on it, and I'd be able to answer any questions that you might have. And then, hopefully, you'd be able to consider that this policy would replace policy KFR-1, which is the one we currently have in place, for, for next, for, for the seventeen, eighteen school year.
We have had copies of this for quite some time, does anyone have any more questions on it?
No.
All right, if not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the revisions to the use of school facilities, policy, and fees as presented, and replace the previously approved policy KFR-1.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you. FY18 budget and town meeting update.
You are, you were all there last night.
Yes, we were.
Thanks for your support, we, you know that we acquired consensus budget with the town, it was approved last night at the town meeting, and I really don't have anything other than that for you, unless you have any questions.
Okay, report of the superintendent of schools.
So, I am. I am pleased to be able to announce, and it's already been announced, that we have the Chet Mallett Outstanding Teacher Award designation made. Before I do that, here at the school committee meeting, though, I want to thank Dr. Thomas, and I want to thank Deirdre, who's in the audience with us tonight, and Jessica Kinsman for being on that committee that reviewed the applications. Nominated for this year's award were Christine Beckbold, Diane Benbennick, Jeff Boudreau, Patricia McGee, Tim Pease, Kalen Sampson, and Jason Scott. This award is really something for me that is symbolic of all of the good work that teachers do, but there's one person who is our Teacher of the Year, and for this year, it's Diane Benbennick. Diane has been an ELA coordinator in the Abington Public Schools and a reading teacher for twenty-five years. I'm just going to read just a brief excerpt from the nomination that she was given. In her role as a reading specialist, Ms. Benbennick has not only focused on each individual student whom she was, who she has worked with, but has also helped the entire school community. Over the course of her career, Ms. Benbennick has consistently promoted the importance of reading by instituting several different school-wide reading programs. And during her lengthy career in the Abington Public Schools, she has proved herself to be a distinguished member of the teaching profession. She has an influential role as a model for both students and teachers, who has promoted the importance of literacy. She is committed, she is a committed educator who has provided countless students with the tools necessary to be successful, lifelong readers, and we are proud to nominate her for the Chet Mallett Outstanding Teacher Award. So we usually do this award in front of the entire faculty and staff, and we return in the following year. Diane is retiring at the end of this year, so at the retirement party, we will make sure we also recognize her there at that, at that meeting, so.
Thank you. Well, the next thing on here, although it's under superintendent's report, is the superintendent of schools mid-cycle goals. Actually, the superintendent sets its goals in January, so in December, we will actually be doing his evaluation. However, for the process at the mid-year point, which would be next month, it's our responsibility to let him know whether we feel he is on target to reach his goals, so if anyone has any comments that they would like to get to me, please get to me within the next week or so, so that I can have that put together for our meeting in June. And next, we're going to the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you. I have our monthly school building committee update. We did a tour a few weeks ago with the school building committee, school committee, finance committee, the building is coming along, it's pretty amazing. We are about a week and a half away from substantial completion, which means ninety-eight percent or ninety-nine percent of the, of the building is complete. Furniture and equipment is starting to, was starting to be delivered this week, so we have desks and chairs, and it's just, it's amazing, it's just coming together unbelievably. We are still planning to have our soft opening for summer school for July, beginning on July tenth. The principals, Matt McCarty and Terry Sullivan, are working on schedules for student orientations the week before school starts, so as soon as those come together, we'll get those out to families. I just need to, again, acknowledge the work that not only our professional team has done, that we've hired, but also the collaboration that we've had with other town departments around this, the fire department, the police department, the DPW, town hall, and people have just stepped up, come to meetings, made decisions, and really, for the best interest of not just the children of Abington, but really the town, really the town as a whole. And that's just, it's been really nice, it's been really nice to work with those other people in the town departments. We, it's, it's really weird to think that we're winding this process down, it feels like we started it. Well, I can remember being hired in Abington twelve years ago, talking about building the barrel school, so we've been talking about it a long time, and, you know, in another couple of meetings, I'll be announcing it's open, and kids are there, and, so, I don't know if people wanted to share anything about their, the walkthrough.
I, I mean, it's amazing, it really is, I mean, you know, the auditorium, everything, you know, the, the walkways, the hallways, the classrooms, hopefully, everything will be a hundred percent utilized, I mean, it's just, it's just phenomenal.
I have to say that I've been on the school building committee also since the start, and it's, I couldn't make that meeting, I had gone and had seen it, and it's beyond my expectations, beyond, and I, I've seen the prints, I've seen the pictures, I've seen everything from day one, and it's still heads and tails above of anything I could have imagined.
I think the other important piece of that is everything, everything was done with the dollar in mind, and those people in the school building committee, we talk about it every single month, that it is a beautiful building, it is a functional building, it was done, every decision that was made, was made economically, you know, whether it was the wall covering so that preventing, you know, maintenance in the future would have, would be less, or floor coverings, or lighting, LED lighting to keep our electrical costs down, so it, you do, it's been really fun over the last couple of weeks to be in the building with people who haven't been in it in a while, and there's that, there is that wow factor, but I just want people to remember that it's wow, but every, every piece of furniture, every wall covering, every floor covering, was, decisions were made in a very deliberate way.
Which leads me to our next microphone.
We are on, no, we're, we're on budget, we're below budget at this point, and, I don't know what that means, but we're not over budget, and we're early, I mean, we're supposed to, also remember, we were supposed to be opening in December, and we're opening in July.
Thank you, that was, that was an amazing tour through the building.
So, and if, if you could.
Yes.
If you noticed last night, the town voted a couple of the buildings that were currently in surplus, so let's hope it really is open in time, because.
They're taking our buildings.
We had a vote of a couple of surplus.
Peter, sorry, I also just wanted to remind people, we talked about last month, too, we're having the public yard sale on July eighth, on Saturday, I assume it'll be first thing in the morning, we'll have the Times, they'll have those out, and I also want to remind people that those are items that we can, that can, it's cash and carry, nothing is being removed from the walls, or the ceilings, or, so it's, it'll be, you know, student desks, teacher desks, filing cabinets, those type of things, it's not going to be lockers, it's not going to be, you know, display cases that are screwed in, or lighting fixtures, or speakers, those kinds of things, so. And there's a process, too, that other town departments, of municipality, so some of the things that you, and what we're taking to other schools, which isn't that much, but there will be some things that will have been sold prior, or have been prior, and then whatever's left, not whatever's left, whatever we can bring to the cafeteria, it's going to be down at cafeteria and in those hallways around the cafeteria.
Can I ask you a question? Is that just for Abington High School, the, the sale, or would Center School and North School be a part of that?
There will be some items from the other schools, but it'll mostly be Abington High School. And you also have voted previously to, that we could, to surplus equipment that's unsafe and broken, so those things aren't going to be for sale.
Anyone have any other questions? Okay, dates to remember.
Other dates to remember, we have the twenty-six is the senior reception, and the receiving line at Abington High School at four-thirty. On May thirtieth, we've got the music banquet at the senior center at six-thirty PM. June first, we have the senior awards evening at Abington High School at seven PM. June third, we have the graduation at Abington High School. If you haven't told Mrs. Kelleher if you're coming or not, please do, committee members, because she's making sure she saves seats and probably a water bottle for everybody. On June fifth, the under.
Underclass awards on Abington.
Underclass awards aren't happening, right, Kelly?
They're not happening until the fall.
Okay, so scratch that one, thank you. And on June 7th, we have our next school building committee meeting at the Abington Police Station in the community room at 6:00 PM.
Can I say one thing, I think for the next school committee meeting, I don't.
June 23rd, the Friday.
Oh, right, sorry, that's my fault.
So is that June 22nd?
I think it's the 20th.
20th?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we, your establishing of our next committee meeting and our adjourning of the meeting, this is our last meeting with Kathy.
Mom, where is the next?
You can come if you want, but it's after graduation.
Yeah.
And I want you to know how much we have appreciated your involvement on the school committee, and we want you to take your name tag with you today so that you never forget us.
Put it up in your dorm room.
Appreciate Kathy allowing, I've got two quick things. The first one is, I just want to thank the administrative team that I'm working with for, I think they demonstrated tonight the level of detail and the level of sophistication and the level of thought that is going into all of these moves and these transitions while managing active and busy schools and activities and field trips, while managing transitions and construction projects and the evaluation of staff, and attending to any number of critical student needs or issues at a moment's notice at the drop of a hat. And I, as we started this whole school process, I was very nervous about how we were going to bring this whole thing together. I'm still nervous about it, because there's still a lot of work to do, but I always feel better because of the good work that they do and the help that they, they provide our kids in our, in our system. So tonight was just a snapshot of some of that work, so I thought it was a good time to make that statement. And joining that administrative team here tonight, a surprise visitor, is Lori Grover, our new assistant principal at the Beaverbrook Elementary School, so.
Thank you. It's a pleasure and an honor now to be joining Abington Public Schools. I'm looking forward to it. I spent half a day today at Beaverbrook, attended a few meetings, met a lot of the staff. Looking forward to my next full day on the region fifth with them, building.
Visiting kindergartners.
Staff meeting and PTO meeting, so looking forward to the upcoming school year and working with Catherine and continuing my leadership practice with Catherine.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome, you.
Thanks.
All right, new business for establishing of next school committee meeting dates, we Tuesday, June 20th, 2017, at 7:00 PM, car hearing room at town hall. And unless anyone has anything else to do, then obtain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.